Thank you all, you'll see.
Okay, I have got nine o'clock and I'm going to call the meeting to order. All members of the Board of Selectmen are present. Also, Colleen is joining us as a a guest and I see Paul Vargas also on the meeting. And the first item under three is discuss and or act on DPW Director Appointment. We have interviewed and I believe probably a motion is in order.
Um, okay. I cannot remember. Uh, okay, so I make a motion that we hire Shannon Mercier, uh, whose nickname is Sam, for Director of Public Works, um, at a salary of sixty-five thousand, uh, plus any overtime.
That's correct.
Starting, starting July first.
Friendly amendment with, with full benefits.
With full benefits.
Is there a second for that motion?
I'll certainly second that.
Do we have any further discussion?
Uh, the only thing I'd like to say is that we had candidates from Public Works, uh, who are already in Public Works who applied and, um, we are so proud to have those people on our, our crew and, um, look forward to, uh, working with them in the future to provide some additional opportunities for them.
Um, I agree with that. I, I have had a meeting, um, with both of those gentlemen and, uh, expressed that to them personally, but also on behalf of the town. Um, it's good to have that talent. Roger, any comment?
No, no.
No. I, I also had a conversation with Sam yesterday, uh, just to make sure we were all on the same page and everything and he's very anxious. Um, looks forward and has verified that his start date can be July first, so. Uh, that's been confirmed. Any more discussions? All in favor of the motion on the floor, signify by saying aye. Thank you very much and, uh, I'd just like to add at this time and we've got some time to do this that, uh, our retiring director, uh, his talents and energies and dedication at town are much appreciated over the years and, uh, he will be missed.
I echo that. Uh, and I thank him for, uh, being willing to work with his, uh, successor and, uh, uh, he's just a great citizen in this town.
Okay, item four, Status of the After-School, um, Children Program. Um, as I believe I sent an email out to you folks, the Board of Education at their last meeting last week, um, did vote in favor of partnering, partnering with the town, uh, and going forward with this program. What that entails, I, I've had, what I'd like to do is probably set a special meeting with our board, with the, uh, Chairman of the Board of Ed and also the Superintendent at our earliest convenience and just start to work out the particulars of that arrangement. Conceptually, what we're talking about is the employees would be town employees, payrolls, um, timesheets, whatever else needs to be done, revenues and that would be held handled through our finance department. On the job, onsite administration would be handled, um, by our staff there on school who would report directly to the superintendent and the superintendent would have oversight of operations, including any problems and coordinate with the first selectman, um, as the program matures and if any problems or, or we have to revisit any of the policies, but, uh, what I'd suggest and, and like I said probably earlier, rather than later at the latest that our next regular selectments meeting, we invite, uh, Cindy Ford and, and Jane Urban, uh, to sit down with us to start working out the particulars of, uh, implementing this, uh, a goal that, that the school has and I, I I also share that is to try to have this in place and operable by September first. Other than that, I don't, I don't see any need for any motion on that at this point unless Roger, either you or Catherine do.
Oh, that's a long time coming.
Catherine.
I'm, I'm assuming that a motion will be appropriate at the point in time we work out the details because the selectmen have to approve that.
I agree.
Okay, um, let me think if there was any other question here. You said onsite admin, administration would be to the super, at the school through the superintendent, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, and do we have any idea aside from three or four people who have pursued this? Do we have any idea how many people we're going to have? How many children or parents?
The, the maximum, the, the, the maximum that Dave Roskin projected.
No, I wasn't talking about that. I was talking about how many people are actually interested, not the maximum.
Uh, we, we have kind of held back on putting that information out there. Um, although the rec committee did, as you, everybody's aware of, a number of months ago, put something in. Um, and we asked, we pulled it back for the next two months until we were sure we were going to try to proceed with this. I don't have the number. I was interested. I am being advised by a number of sources in town that there is a need. I don't know other than three or four people that have been on actively
Anxious.
going that we, we go forward with this. I don't have a specific number. The limit on the program we've talked is between twenty and twenty-two.
My suggestion is that before we do our final approval, once we've worked out the details, um, that we, um, what's the word, survey the parents, um, to find out how many people are actually interested. If we only have five or six parents or ten kids, I'm not sure that the program can sustain itself.
Yeah, I'm I'm relatively comfortable that, that, I agree with that. Uh, but I'm relatively comfortable that the need is greater than that.
With the what?
Greater than the five or six or ten. Um, but that's certainly something. Now, we're coming up um, on the deadline today on the citizen. Perhaps we can put something together, uh, quickly and get it to the citizen, ask people to, uh, to, uh, contact this office if they are interested in, in applying.
Right. I would do that.
If I happen to be here, I'll try to, uh, to put something together and we'll get something in.
Yeah, I think that would give us a good lay of the land.
Yeah.
Also, um, did you talk at all? Well, we'll work through the details first. Thank you. Thanks for the update.
Roger, anything further?
Nope.
On that? Okay. Item five, Ashford Citizen, Establishment of Policies and Procedures Relating to, uh, uh, Production and Content.
Uh, I make a motion, motion that we table that until our next meeting.
Okay, um, would you have any objection if Colleen wanted to give us a little input on some of her thoughts? Not necessarily on those policies and procedures or, but perhaps where her priorities are and some things that are perhaps more, more
I think, I think that would be great. She's now had some time to kind of get her feet settled and get settled and I'd love to have her hear what she, uh, has to say about it.
Okay, so before we entertain any other motion, Colleen, the floor is yours. I know we, we've had some brief talks about.
We have. Uh, everything's been going great, I feel.
Um, I can't, I'm sorry, I can't hear you very well.
Would you have a seat?
I'm turning up the volume. Let's see if this works.
And she's moving closer.
Um, I, I think everything's been running great. It's been wonderful. People are getting their articles and, and posts in, in time, so I'm not worried about that. But it's really hard to put, um, I, in the draft of policies and procedures, you have a calendar of this and production and that's really hard because that changes month to month. I can't say like on the twenty-second of the month, I can get it over to the printer because it really has a lot to do with where the weekends fall.
Would it help? Would it help if we had a date range? You know, we're talking about
For sure.
Yeah, the date, date range for each. And why don't you take a look and figure out what you think those date ranges should be?
Okay. I mean, I, I have a great idea what the date ranges should be. The other thing is, um, I do think that we, you know, again, looking at the draft, leave room for, um, people who are not tech savvy, who have to bring in their article or advertisement because I know there are a few who don't have access to a computer. And so I would hate to say, well then you can't put anything into the citizen.
It was my understanding that some people have come in with just a little bit of information on a scrap of paper and expected the, um, expected the, uh, editor to do a write-up.
So, I, I will say
Is that something you're, is that something you're looking to take on?
Um, that, that is because here's that, that person happens to come in with just an adjustment to his already advertisement in the citizen. So that's, yeah, a word or two here. I'm not writing up an actual advertisement for him. So, that's fine with me.
Um.
Is that just one individual? Out of curiosity, is that just one individual? And I, I'm pretty sure I know.
The, the written part, uh, two. There's two.
Two.
I do that right now and it's just a, a sentence or two that I'm adjusting to their ad and I, to me, it takes a minute, you know, it's not, that's not too bad.
That's terrific. I was more concerned about, or I am more concerned about ones that come in with a new ad and you have to do extra work because there's so much to putting this, this document together.
Right, and, and I appreciate that, but almost everybody has sent it digitally, which is great.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Anything else?
Um, no, just to keep in mind, you know, I appreciate sharing so much because I'm, I'm looking at how much time this consumes. I was not prepared for how much time this actually takes between the financial part of it as well because I'm accepting the checks, making deposits, you know, putting labels on mailings that need to go out, renewals come up monthly. It's not everybody at the same time, so it's, you know, when they take their ads out, keeping track of all of that too, so it's, it's, um, quite a few hours. Last month it was about twenty-seven hours. You know, this month, I don't know, so, you know, I'll keep track of it for the next few months just to see where that goes.
Yeah, posted on that. I know another thing you had mentioned to me, you thought it was important that we act sooner rather than later is if we are going to put limits on the size of the ads and also revisit the, uh, the cost of the ads.
Right, so if we're going to change that part of it, I would say it's very important then because right now I'm renewing ads and subscriptions at the cost that we have listed now. And so if you're going to change that, it's probably important to at least give them a heads up. I can't change the already, you know, already paid. If they're, if they're now paid for a whole year, they're on the old cost, so it would only be new advertisers or new.
Well, I think we're gonna probably have to eat that, but one of the things that, that we've talked about as a board and Colleen, we've also discussed is limiting the size of a, of, an ad from one page to a maximum of a half a page. And correct me if I'm wrong, right now we charge a hundred dollars for a full page. What we were talking about was restructuring that. And if you get a full pa, a half a page, which is the limit, it would be sixty. If you got a quarter of page, it would be forty. You jump in if I'm
Thirty.
Thirty.
Thirty for a quarter page.
And for a, uh, business card, twenty.
Yep.
Compared to what we have right now. We don't have to, we're not going to decide on that today, but I think that makes sense.
Um, Bill, you, yeah, I think, I think that makes sense as well. The, um, what I'd like to do is, I'm trying to figure out how we can do this as soon as possible, at least to get the word out on the size of the ads. Um,
Well, if the board is comfortable, we could give Colleen the, the go-ahead to, to do that for this coming issue. At least, I think we ought to give people probably at least thirty or sixty days' notice, effective date. August first, September first, this will be the new rate structure.
Um, and I'm wondering if that's something that we can get into this citizen.
Sure, I mean, I, I have to have it, I give it to the printer tomorrow. So I'll be working on it most of the day today. Most of it is already in place. I'm just putting in the last few articles. I haven't heard from the rec center. I haven't heard from the citizen. I haven't heard, I mean, the senior center. There's a few that give it to me the very last day, so.
So, um, and our thoughts, you know, certainly my thoughts were that if we have, if these, if it's a town department, okay, that is, that is putting in an ad, um, they don't pay for that ad. That's correct, right?
That's correct.
So anyone who is, does not pay for an ad, um, and we've, we have it laid out right now. I'm, I'm not, I'm sure we'll revisit it. But I would think that any town department is not limited to one page. Uh, anybody else would be limited to half, I'm sorry, is, would be limited to half a page.
Right. It would be the advertisements. It would be the paid advertisements coming into the citizen. That would be limited to a half a page.
Bill, can I make a motion on this?
Um, yeah, we can have a little more discussion on it, but sure.
Okay, so I'd like to make a motion that we change
You already have a motion on the Florida table. So you have to get rid of that.
Uh, no, hold on.
Oh, I'd like to read.
That, that motion is not on the floor because it wasn't seconded.
Right. Thank you, but thank you, thank you, Chris, for picking up on that. Um, uh, I'd like to mo, make a motion that, uh, we change the, uh, rate structure and, uh, limits on, uh, Ashford Citizen ads to be, uh, for paid ads that, uh, they be limited to half a page maximum and that the rate structure would be sixty dollars for half a page, thirty dollars for a quarter page and twenty dollars for a, um, is it business card?
Business card, yes. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, um, no, I think that's a good idea and, and the only friendly amendment, can we say in order to give people a little time that would, the effective date of that will be either August first or September first?
Yes, which, which you think is preferable?
I like, what do you think, Colleen? I like
I think September.
I think September first is good.
Yeah, so, and so the friendly amendment is, uh, starting September first.
Effective September first.
Effective September first.
Okay.
And, uh, and as far as more discussion on this, I, uh, that will help us manage the size uh, and complexity of the Ashford Citizen.
Exactly.
Sounds good to me. Any more discussion on that? All in favor of the motion on the floor, signify by saying aye.
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 Very good, thank you. Um, question, Colleen?
I'm, I'm sorry, Colleen, you'll put something in the citizen that says that, that points it out so people can see it pretty obviously?
I will. I, right now it is set up, um, the first page always stays the same pretty much, you know, where we're putting the policies and procedures. I'm not going to put the prices in there. And then the second page, the facing page to that right now are two notices from both the Republican Party and Democrat Party for the caucus. So I think I will put it on the next page or I'll move, I'll bump that up. So I'll just, I'll put it facing, yeah.
Very good.
I'll put it facing.
Yeah, we just want people to notice it and if it's just, you know, buried somewhere, they're not going to see it.
Right.
And, um, and you might want to, as people turn in their ads, you might want to, to let them know verbally.
Yeah, I'll definitely come up with a, an email of some sort, a letter that I can send to all of the advertisers at this point.
Perfect.
But yeah, I thought it would be
And if there are some that you've got subscribers that are already paid and you'll let them know.
I'll let them know.
We're gonna recognize that.
Right. Right.
Okay.
Yeah, because, 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 I'm sorry.
I know that ABA has, has pulled their ads.
Yeah, the ABA has pulled their ads, so that's the two center pages and the back page, which gives us more room.
I know at one time, I don't know if they had time to do it. We're going to try to contact all of those.
I was, I was waiting to see if there was going to be price changes.
Okay, all right, so you'll, that's still
I'll reach out to them, yeah.
Okay.
And and Colleen, you'll let us know how that affects the size of the citizen because if I understand the way it's, needs to be published is in four paging increments.
Yes, right now it's at thirty-two pages. We pretty much use all thirty-two pages.
Right.
But I did notice this month, I, you know, again, I don't have everybody's, um, information. You know, senior center always takes two pages, rec center's two pages, um, the library's two pages, so right now as it stands, it looks like it's going to remain thirty-two.
Okay.
Okay, at least temporarily.
Temporarily, right, right.
Roger, any thoughts or questions?
No, no.
This is good. Catherine, anything further on that?
Nope. I, Colleen, I thank you for your efforts and for your insights today.
Thank you. It's been a fun, creative venue.
Thanks.
I'll bet.
All right, um, and so we'll, uh,
We'll table the policies and procedures.
Because we can't, regarding executive session at this time because it's a special meeting and we can't add anything new, but we'll make a note and carry this to our next meeting for consideration.
Very good.
Addressing the policies and procedures. All right, I've got, uh, nine twenty-one.
Motion to adjourn.
Seconded.
We have a motion on the floor. This is the second in unanimously, I assume. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yes.
Your meeting was short.
Uh?
Your meeting was short.
Yep, it was, um.
Table this, table that.
Yeah. Well, no, actually what happened is we did ended up not tabling, we let uh sure uh Colleen talk about some of her ideas and uh um and I went ahead and said, okay, let's let's limit the size of a paid ad to half a page, not a full page.
Yeah.
It's gonna be starting effective September first, so and also what the new rates will be, which are sixty for half a page, thirty four quarter page and twenty four A uh business card. And uh they're gonna put a little thing and she's gonna put something in this coming month's Ashford Citizen.
Mm-hmm.
So it'll be in there for July and then it's effective September first.
Talking that broad as to.
Yep. Then also she's gonna uh write up a letter to send to the subscriber, you know, the people who do put the ads in. Uh, so that helped her. Okay. Uh, and then uh we will talk, I uh had already told Bill I don't agree with what the attorney put for what we're gonna change.
The uh.
Yeah.
Script is.
I'm not.
Yeah.
Don't agree with that at all. Uh, and when it came to apparently the Board of Ed is in favor of partnering with the town on a childcare program. Um and there's more details that need to be worked out. We're gonna have a board event, a board of selectmen meeting with uh Cindy from the superintendent and Jane, the uh Board of Ed chair. The school's goals, put that in place September first. And the town, these employees that are on the town payroll, they have to put their out, you know, mark their hours. The revenues come in through the town. On-site administration is the superintendent and if there's any issues, um, it comes back to the, you know, that person goes to this first selectman. And my suggestion was that we also prior to finalizing this, because Bill said we didn't need a motion. I said, well, we will need a motion to put this in place. And I said, but finally, before we do that, I would like us to survey the town to find out how many parents are actually gonna use this program so that we, if it's only five or ten, it won't self-sustain.
I would put that onto the school.
No, no, bear with me, not onto the school so much as it would go in the Ashford Citizen. And and it would say uh to contact the first selectmen's office and he would have to keep a tally. He was the one that said about talking, contact the office, keep a tally because um we've only heard from four people who've been persisting.
Right. But I would say that putting it in the citizen
is.
is not or just the citizen, it should be put out through the school because that's where the kids and the parents are. That would be a more direct request for information for people that's directly going to affect.
Yeah, except the school's not paying for it. And I, what I really wanna see.
They're supporting it. They're supporting it free and free of charge.
It's happening while they're still there physically. Um and then no, they're not supporting it free of charge because their employees are gonna get paid for it.
Yeah, the town's paying for it.
Yes, that's true.
It is. It's it's not on.
Effective.
It doesn't cost them anything to offer this up.
Right.
Full from a liability standpoint as well as a financial standpoint.
Yep. Well, I said a survey.
I fully agree with you in that you need to know that more than four freaking people are interested in this.
Right. And Bill said he was pretty sure that there were more than more than ten.
How the fuck does he know he doesn't have a kid in school?
No, he doesn't, but yeah, he just says.
Well, he has such a great relationship with the superintendent, right?
Like the previous superintendent.
Yeah.
And what about the one before that? I don't know about the one before that.
Before that was under you.
So uh I am going through these questions.
What?
Because when I said, he said, could I highlight the ones that are in issue? I thought, yeah, I think I'll take it a little further.
You shouldn't be doing the work on this. You should just be giving it to the council and have them go through their uh.
I'm just, I'm doing what's in the Connecticut Department of Labor. Okay?
Yeah.
What I really wanna do is just not do like a hit and run. Um so.